7.4, consideration of presentation on broadband initiatives. This is from our administration office. Thank you, Matthew. And we've got our deputy CIO, Ben Rinkelmann. Welcome, Ben.
That was close.
It's internal.
Has that USB been approved?
Came from administration here.
What happened? When the walk across the lobby?
It wasn't on the park bench outside.
Should I be over there then to click?
If you want to see what you're doing.
Yes.
Disadvantage.
Ta-da.
Good afternoon, Board. Ben Rinkelmann, Deputy County Administrative Officer. I also have Dick Nielsen, who is a senior engineer with CBG Communications. CBG is our broadband consultant for updated master broadband plan and will also be working on the implementation plan.
Hello.
Thanks for joining us, Dick.
Okay, my girl.
I'm going to go over a few slides and then CBG will go in-depth on the master plan. Overall, the reason I'm here is there's a lot happening in the broadband space. There's a lot of moving money in the state budget. The federal funding account, which is the $28.4 million allocated for last mile wireline broadband infrastructure in Lake County. The applications are due at the end of this week, so we should see some movement on that. I haven't got an exact date from the CPUC when they're going to choose the projects, but I'm guessing four to six months we might hear something. There is a state fund, the California Advanced Services Fund. This is funded through a surcharge on the telecommunications companies here in California. So it's not as expansive of funding as the federal programs, but it has much more flexibility and it has some interesting parameters that could be really useful for Lake County. The middle mile broadband network, there's been some funding changes and that's in development where the state of California is going to go with that, so I can provide a bit more detail there. Then there's BEED. I know there's several different buckets here, so feel free to ask questions in the acronym soup of broadband. So the state of California, a few months ago, was allocated about $1.86 billion through this. This was funded through the federal infrastructure bill. What happens with it is still to be determined. The CPUC said they were going to issue guidance next month, October, so the county might be providing comment. And then final guidance should come out in December. So we're anticipating deployment of BEED funds in 2024. So the state budget in broadband. So back in 2021, there was SB 156 passed, about $6 billion in broadband funding, a mixture of general fund, and then there was broadband funding in the CARES Act, ARPA and the infrastructure bill. As you're well aware, the California state budget goes up and down a bunch. So this year was a down year, so that meant certain things had to be pushed back to remove, and one of them was portions of the broadband program, specifically last mile and the loan loss reserve. The governor's budget on the right, and this comes from a report from the Legislative Analyst Office, I can send that out. It's a good overview. It's about 15 pages of kind of what's changed. But the two major programs that have been impacted is the loan loss reserve and the last mile. Those are what they're mapping out for future fiscal years, but that, of course, is not a guarantee. That is just what the governor's office is projecting, so we'll see what happens in this upcoming budget year.
I have a quick question about that, and I kind of wanted to bring it up for Supervisor Simon as well, actually, and Supervisor Crandall. I know Caltrans has a rule that when they redo highways, that they're supposed to trench out for broadband alongside the highways. For Highway 29, if I remember correctly from our APC meeting, Supervisor Simon, they said that they have a separate utility corridor that's outside of the highway, so they weren't going to implement broadband there. And so it's just something that, as I see that middle mile is starting to scale back, we need to just really push, no, you will put broadband if you're working on this highway and not get a different story of, don't worry, it'll be on this corridor over here. So we got an exemption for the project. And so I know that that happened for the Highway 29 corridor, Canacti corridor that was just finished, or at least part A. But just something to keep in mind, that I feel like the backscaling of the middle mile is hurting us twice as much because we also lost it out on Highway 29.
Completely agree, and try to bring it up every time. If they're going to be doing the projects in Lake County, they need to be getting that infrastructure in the ground now, so I completely agree.
Agree too. It's something we are going to keep on top with Caltrans and CPUC. I will say, I'm jumping a little around in the presentation.
Sorry.
But, no, 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 it's a good question. So with the middle mile, there's now this phase one and phase two. The state might be moving on from that also, but let's stick with the phase one and phase two. That portion of 29 is still in the phase one, in the funded portion, and all the middle mile in Lake County is going to be built. There's nothing existing for them to lease, so I anticipate construction starting probably in 2024, no matter what on that section. I would also add just that the amount in the revised broadband budget is about a half billion dollars more, but again, that is future fiscal years, so we'll see what happens. So the federal funding account. So just to recap again, this was an allocation for each county, so it's guaranteed for that county. For Lake County, it's about $28.4 million. They have pretty stringent requirements. It's got to be wireline, so no fixed wireless, which is difficult for a lot of sections of Lake County due to our topography. There's about a 9,300 cap per household for ministerial review. Projects can go above it, but then the whole CPUC board commission has to approve those projects, and they have a really high service requirement, 100 megabytes down, 100 megabytes up. A lot of federal programs and state programs are more in the 120 range. So the initial submissions are due by the end of this week. We're cognizant of two for Lake County. One of them is the RCRC Open Access Fiber. So this would build off the middle mile. It would enable several different ISPs to offer service off of this. So there's, a company they're working with has a network in suburban Salt Lake, and if you're in the neighborhood they have, you can choose from several different plans. So I don't know how much new households it'll provide high-quality broadband to. I think what the major benefit, at least the initial phase, will be pricing, which I know is a major issue in Lake County, so it could really drive down the cost of your monthly broadband bill. They're mostly proposing around the lake. There's a bit in Cobb and also outside of Kelseyville. We also have a large ISP that provides primarily residential service here, and they have mostly proposed providing service to unserved areas. RCRC's proposal is about four times as big as the ISPs, and kind of the total between the two is significantly over the $28 million. So it'll be interesting to see what the CPUC decides to do. They have a pretty complicated scoring metric. You can find it on their site. We did send letters of support for both projects. So we should know, the CPUC won't give me a timeframe when they're going to make a decision, but my guess is in five to six months. If they don't allocate all $28 million, there might be another FFA funding round, which would be in the beginning of 2024. So as I mentioned before, this is a state program. You can use fixed wireless for this, so it actually has been a lot of fixed wireless proposals. The advantage of fixed wireless, especially for Lake County, is for hilly topography, it's just much more affordable to put the infrastructure in. So we have North Coast Networks and Digital Path have both proposed fixed wireless projects for Lake County. They would serve a good amount of unserved and underserved households, so it'd be great if they were approved. But again, there's the funding issue. The state said there is about 10 times as many proposals as there is available funding this year. The upside is because it's a recurring surcharge, it's not a one-time pot of money, so even if we're unsuccessful in future years, there could be possible CASF projects. And these are available on the CPUC's websites. These are the proposed CASF fixed wireless projects. They're required to provide a service of 100 up, 100 down, 20 up, and they have an affordability requirement for a few years. The FFA also has an affordability requirement for a few years also.
Quick question. On that map on the left, just because I love polygons, but.
Sure.
That appears to be increasing coverage for my sailboat, but not any land on Buckingham Peninsula. Is that, should that be overshadowed, Buckingham Peninsula, within that polygon?
Yeah, I asked Digital Path why they included polygons over the lake, and his answer was, well, because of the nature of fixed wireless, you would get service there if you're on the lake, and I don't think that's going to do much for the CPUC, but they put it in there.
Those areas, the lake would be served.
Correct.
Residents on Buckingham Peninsula itself would not be shown in that?
So their proposed location for the equipment is on Buckingham Peak, where the towers, they would just attach more fixed wireless equipment. Because you need eyesight for the fixed wireless, because of the kind of the slope of Canacti and the trees, it's not going to, there's not going to be that line of communication for a lot of households on Buckingham Peninsula. So this is definitely a piece of legislation that's.
And if I could jump in, I had, I was on mute, I was trying to add on that last slide. If you look at the, if you can go back one, if you look at the one on the right, the peninsula is covered by North Coast Networks. Zach?
It may just be a visual artifact, you know, I don't know. Thank you.
Yeah, you're correct, Dick. So the fixed wireless signal is coming from another point, so it's going to hit the peninsula there, whereas the one that's on Buckingham Peak is not.
And these two providers, if you look at all of the maps, these two providers, if they both got all the funding they're asking for, would pretty much cover the, not just the shoreline, but it would go all the way around the lake and inland a little bit, which of course is where a lot of the population resides. I'm sorry, go ahead, Ben.
No problem. Appreciate it. So the middle mile network, original proposal is going to be a little over 10,000 miles. The state realized, I mean, some of it isn't their fault, so the price of telecommunications equipment during the pandemic increased a lot, and so they currently do not have the budget for the entire 10,000-plus network. So they came out about two months ago with this phase one and unfunded phase two. The phase one is about a little over 8,000 miles. So, and the dark orange is the phase one, and then the purple is the phase two. About three weeks ago, the state removed this map from their website, the Department of Technology, which is overseeing this. I've heard there's a significant pushback both in rural and urban California. It was not necessarily the most equitable way they decided these two categories. There's indications that the governor is going to include funding for phase two in next year's budget, but nothing is guaranteed at this point.
The middle mile has changed at least a handful of times over the past couple of years, and it really throws a wrench into things for people like myself in engineering, where you're trying to figure out, okay, you want to expand out into an area that's not currently served, okay, jump on the middle mile, and, you know, that offsets a lot of the potential costs that you would have and makes the, you know, makes the project doable, right? Makes the numbers come out. And then all of a sudden, 10 miles of middle mile you were counting on is gone. It really gets difficult, so hopefully that will be the case, that they'll fund that in the nearer term, rather than letting it go way out some, you know, 10 years or five years.
From what I've heard from the state, I'm fairly confident they'll at least try to fund it in next year's budget.
That would be great.
So the last program, it's the one we have the least details about. It is BEED. So there was about $46 billion appropriated in the infrastructure bill. California, on a calculation of need, got about $1.86 billion. And as I mentioned, we should have a better feel of the program next month when the CPUC issues draft guidance on the program. They have mentioned that it could be a competitive grant instead of an allocation like FFA, so that means we will need to be proactive and on top of it, and master plan will help us with that, advocating for BEED dollars in Lake County. So in 2019, the county put together a master broadband plan, and then anticipation with all this federal funding for broadband and just the need of broadband service that was, became clear with the pandemic, commissioned an updated version of it, working with CBG. So there's been a lot of analysis of kind of level of service, and a major issue with broadband policy and funding has been mapping, really figuring out who has broadband and at what quality. Thankfully, the FCC has finally put together high-quality maps. They're not 100% accurate, but they go down to the household, and that's been really useful, kind of thinking through what we can do in Lake County. We've been doing a fair amount of community outreach to industry, tribal nations, different nonprofits, different entities within the county, thinking through different policy recommendations, what we can do in the built environment, how we can utilize county resources, what funding sources we can go after. And then, this is just portions of the online map CBG has put together, so we were going to put out a link to it. It's also linked in the report. It's an interactive map that you can look through different levels of service, and then also other layers for different proposed projects, and such things as community anchor And this is highly speculative. It kind of is contingent on what are the FFA projects that are actually going to come in, what are the BEED projects? So we were kind of thinking, well, if certain areas are going to be covered with those funding, kind of what are the other gaps we can fill? So this is just preliminary analysis, also trying to lean on the middle mile network, understanding kind of the level of funding and what's realistic for a project to pencil out.
Ben, if I could just jump in real quick. The value of a map like this, although speculative, as Ben was saying, is that you can then drill down onto this map, where this functionality really didn't exist just a few years ago in the broadband world, anyway. Drill down, and then you can, you know, click inside any one of these polygons, and it will give you information of how many unserved households reside inside of that box, so you can start to play around with those polygons and, you know, figure out, okay, if we did this, how many households would be, you know, impacted by it? And so it really helps in the next stage of the project that we'll be working on with the county, but I'd point that out.
Sounds great. And is there any additional comment quickly you want to provide, Dick, on the updated master plan?
Boy, how much time have you got, right? It's, the updated master plan includes both availability, which is the physical assets, you know, where can you get it, where can't you get it, regardless of price or any other issue like that. And then the second half, which I didn't work so much on, but our company did, different people in our company, is the availability, or the adoption piece. Okay? So the first thing that plays into adoption is, well, I can't even get it here. It doesn't physically exist. Okay, that's part of adoption. But then you get into all kinds of socioeconomic issues, you know, it's too expensive, I don't need it, I don't know how to use it, all of these different adoption issues that are a part of the puzzle as well. So now, as you deploy more out into the county with broadband, getting it to where people can afford it, people know how to use it, people, I guess, rely on it, you know, they do their banking the new way, right? Online, as opposed to having to run to the bank to do it. And anybody that's got internet, which is the very vast majority of us, knows what it brings to the table, and the functionality and efficiencies it brings. So teaching that to people and getting that into people's hands is also part of it. And so a lot of the issues with both availability and adoption have been figured out, if you will, at this stage. Okay? So now we know what the issues are. It's not anecdotal, it's updated, it's, you know, it's proven as best it can be. Now, the next piece is the implementation plan, which will actually address, how do we, how do we go after fixing some of these, you know, some of these pieces of adoption, you know? Okay, we've got the $28.4 million that's sitting there, let's, how can we most efficiently use that to get to the most households, residents, businesses, and so on and so forth? So that's part of the, that will be more the focus of the implementation plan, as well as addressing some of those adoption issues of affordability and those kinds of things, so.
Thank you. Any questions?
Supervisor Spatier?
Yes, I appreciate getting this updated. That's step one, in order to make sure that we utilize all the available funds to the best of our needs. Is this a final draft of the revised master broadband plan, master plan for broadband?
I want to incorporate some of the more implementation directions, so I think it would be really useful once we get the BEED guidance, because that could be a significant amount of funding, and the county could be much more hands-on with that than the FFA, because we don't directly control anything with FFA, so I think that should be incorporated into the report.
So, and then once it's incorporated and finalized, it'll come back to us for a final approval?
Correct.
Okay, so some of my comments, I'll just keep privately, so we can maybe see some of those made in there, because they're mostly words or typos or things like that. So I know that the FCC requested, not requested, but opened up their maps and were soliciting public comment for changing their maps, because their maps may not always be correct. Have we submitted anything to the FCC in saying, we found something here that you're not showing on your maps? There is access, or there is definitely not access occurring here. I know in our, some of our NACO meetings, especially with economic mobility, broadband has been a big topic, and it seems that a few of the jurisdictions that I work with or that I'm on the committee with have had to make some pretty drastic changes to their maps that the FCC originated with.
Lake County itself has not. I know a few ISPs have, but no, we have not.
Okay. Because I know that we're building a whole bunch of different maps based on different data sets, and I appreciate that. We have to look at different things, but want to make sure that eventually, especially an ISP or some other major corporation, they're probably going to go to the FCC for those types of maps, rather than ask locally for those maps, I'm guessing, so making sure that we're all on the same page with our findings. There was also mention about some of the fiber access that we have, like LCOE and things like that. I know, I think I mentioned it last time, and I just want to keep mentioning it because I don't believe I'm wrong, but our community college, at least Woodland, has a different pipeline that it connects to, and I didn't find anything related to that pipeline. I believe LCOE comes from Ukiah, but I believe that Woodland's pipeline comes through Calistoga or from the Napa area.
Yeah, so we were going to reach out to both Mendocino and Woodland and see if there's potential partnerships. There could be something with BEED funding, using them as community anchor institutions. I do think most of the residential build-out will be built upon the middle mile, because that's public, whereas the community college is, that's a private connection, but there might be something interesting to do with that FEED they have.
And especially, there's redundancy potential right in the city of Clear Lake, near Dam Road, because both those fibers are literally maybe 200 feet apart, so that if LCOE goes down, maybe the college can support them, or if the college goes down, LCOE can support them. That way, our educational facilities are always going to be online. It was a project that was brought to my attention when I worked over at the college, and I have not heard about that since then. So again, just want a reminder, just because I think redundancies are part of the solution in ensuring that we never go down. Not only are we deploying more, but then we're also less going to go down. My final question is, within the report, it talks about commercial buildings or just access to our businesses for internet. Is there a map that shows the density of businesses to see, when you take a business density map and put it on top of a broadband speed map, that we can make sure that maybe that's some of our priorities, is to ensure our businesses have good access to those things as well? Because it's part of today's business solution, is you have to have reliable and fast internet in order to really compete. And so just kind of wondering if those maps exist, if that's been discussed, is that something people do?
That map, it does not exist. There's no reason it couldn't. The FCC looks at an address as an address, right? Regardless if it's a business, a resident, residential, I believe even, anchor institutions. They're all just an address. But, once you've got that information about that address, now you throw another layer on top of it that defines it as a business, right? So is it doable? I would think it's doable if we've got a good base map or a good layer that is of businesses in, you know, each community or countywide. Not sure where to find that, but I can certainly look for it.
And just as a suggestion, maybe our zoning map, where we look at C1, C2, and C3, or things like that, to help at least get an idea. It may not have a business there, but at least it's an opportunity for a business, and therefore, if we make sure that there's good broadband deployed in those areas, whatever business may develop there, or what business already exists, will benefit from whatever project we decide to focus on. Just something I was thinking about as I was driving through this, and that's the last of it. I appreciate the updates, and let's get that $28 million and put it to use.
That's right. No, you know, the only thing about using a zoning map is a zoning map will show an address that will not show up. You've got to be careful, and I'll explain real quickly. If you put it on a zoning map, that's. If you put it on a zoning map that has an address of where a business could be, but it's just a field today, how does that react to the FCC's map that doesn't even show an address there, and vice versa? So yes, can it be looked at? Can it be experimented with? Absolutely. We'll come up with something.
There's probably some community development data we could pull for that. I was just going to add quickly with business, that's definitely an issue Lake County faces with the cost of broadband. I was kind of shocked with our conversations, how much it costs. I know the residential rate is significantly higher than kind of the average national rate, but especially with businesses here, it's, frankly, some of them, it's fairly exorbitant. So I think the Middle Mile will help a lot with that, be it with open access network or just ISPs building off of it, but there also might be some creative solutions with the BEED money or CASF.
When I was in the background of a discussion that our company held with, I forget if it was vineyards or wineries, but at any rate, right in the middle of the city, Lakeport, and that's, you know, that's got MediaCom right there, and that's about as good as it gets in the county for broadband, other than one-offs from AT&amp;T. In other words, just, you know, if you pay the thousands of dollars to get it from AT&amp;T to go that extra distance, that's available. But the people there were saying that they can't get MediaCom, even though they're within a block of MediaCom. I just find, there's just a disconnect there, and I don't know what it is yet, but I'm going to be, I'll look into it, because they're paying for two or three different cellular services to get marginal service, when to me, a couple hundred bucks for an install, they should be able to get MediaCom, so what's going on there? That's part of the, that's part of the next step, too, figuring those things out. And I apologize if you can hear my dogs in the background.
Any other questions from the board? I'll open up for public comment. Do we have any public comments on this? Okay, then bring it back to the board. Thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you.
There's nothing further? I think this was just presentation.
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much.